Call meeting in order.
Mayor Anken.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Matano.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
We have a quorum.
First session tonight is a work coordinate, or a work session regarding changes to Town of Florence code for adaptive reuse and sign code.
That's correct, and this is going to be our first work session. We are planning on having a second work session on the second meeting in June.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have a packet that included a draft proposal for an adaptive reuse program and also some, some comments on, on possible areas of the sign code that we may want to look at. No motion or action is required tonight. This is the first of two work sessions. We'd like to just kind of introduce these topics tonight and then June 16th have additional discussion. You may want to invite the Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic District Advisory Commission to those work sessions as you, as you feel necessary. Certainly, we would, we're sharing all this information with them and want them to be party to, to this process. So, the first item is regarding the adaptive reuse policy, and I don't have a lot of pretty pictures to show you or anything, so this might be a dry discussion unfortunately. But an adaptive reuse policy is just another, another tool we could potentially utilize to help with development in the, in the core of town. Because we know again and again that the, the situation in the downtown area, especially with an existing buildings, existing lots, is different than it's going to be in the areas where we've never had any development, especially as you get beyond the, the core of Florence. So, what we've done so far is reach out to the International Code Council, the organization that prepared all, all the codes that are used universally by almost every community in the, in the state of Arizona and beyond. They've pretty much adopted from state to state to state. We're on the 2000 series of, of those codes. Some communities have gone up, gone forward and adopted the 2009 codes or 2012 codes recently. We're on the 2006. But we've contacted ICC, their local representative, to, to get ideas from them as far as how we could adjust maybe the building codes to deal with adaptive reuse issues. Also made contact with Local First Arizona, Kimber Lanning with Local First Arizona. A lot of folks know her. She's been instrumental in a lot of infill projects in the downtown Phoenix area and helped the city of Phoenix with the preparation of their adaptive reuse program. We've gone to a workshop on this, on this particular issue and set down, sent out an inquiry to all of the communities in, in Arizona associated with the Arizona Building Officials and ICC organizations. So, we gathered feedback, did our, did our research, and we put this program together, which is really the best of all the programs that are, that are out there. We'd like to go through this process because we'd like to gain additional input from, from you, Mayor and Council, and also the commissions, as I noted before, and of course, the general public in the, in the chamber. This was also forwarded to our Economic Development Committee that we, that we formed recently. So, that's why we're not rushing to, to act on anything tonight and then also not rushing to have the second work session, but it takes some time to gather the input and come back with the final, final program. One of the interesting things that we can do here in adapting, in adopting an adaptive reuse program is we can marry it, so to speak, with the infill incentive district that we've established. And in your packet, I included the language of the infill incentive district. It's a very rich tool that the state of Arizona has, has afforded us. Not very many communities have, have adopted this and only, and only about two or three really have used it effectively. We adopted our program, but unfortunately, we, we've extended the offer to utilize it on a few occasions and those projects never materialized. But what we're thinking here is that this adaptive reuse program could be adopted under the purview of the infill incentive district. Because there are things in the adaptive program that would modify codes, procedures, permits, some of the development standards, et cetera. And normally, if you were to do those things, you'd have to look for specific statutes that would allow you to do that, or look for incentives that are allowed by the state, or amend, amend the building codes, adopt new building codes, amend the development code, et cetera, et cetera. But actually, we believe that we can do this program under, under the auspices of the infill incentive district. So, what are some of the things that we'd like to, to look at? Building codes, change of occupancy, life safety issues, fire safety, plumbing facilities, special occupancy, accessibility, the plan review and permit process and the fees, development impact fees, building lines across, building across property lines, parking requirements, paving, grading, landscaping, to touch on, to touch on the majority of them, but not necessarily everything. And keep in mind, we could always add, add to this program. But the goal of the program overall would be to, to try and streamline the process just a little, a little bit more and make it easier to go into buildings that have been sitting out there for, for a while. They might be older buildings, they might be historic buildings, they might be buildings that were, were built under different, different codes before. There may be a building that, that no longer, that maybe it was built across lot lines, and so you need modifications for that. Some of the issues that come up on the existing buildings is of course trying to apply the new codes, the international, international codes to a new building. Now, we, the town has already adopted the existing building code, and there also is a chapter within the international code, building code, to deal with that. But this program would actually take it a little bit further and allow somebody to go in, into a building and, and, and be able to do the, the new things under less stringent building, building regulations. So, what happens is when somebody goes into a building and, and what you usually try to do on an older building is try to focus on, on exactly what you have to change and what you don't have to change, you try not to, you try not to touch it. Obviously, even you go into an older building, you're gonna, you find a lot of, a lot of things, and as you dig into those, that sometimes can lead, lead to other issues. So, you try to focus on what you have to change, and this is going to allow more flexibility on the building, on the building code side of things. Another thing that typically triggers some, some higher requirements for occupancy is when you have a change of occupancy. And a change of occupancy could even be, when a building is set empty for, for a long time, a change of occupancy usually triggers additional requirements. We would apply a more liberal interpretation to a change of occupancy. So, a building that has been occupied for a period of 10 years or so is not necessarily going to go through a brand-new change of occupancy process. Now, when you talk about those things, that means that those buildings and the modifications that you do to those buildings, they're not going to be completely up to the codes that you would apply to a brand-new building built today in 2014. However, the building official and the, and the fire marshal reviewing, reviewing those projects would certainly look for compliance with minimum life, life safety requirements. So, we want to be flexible on the building issue and, on building code issue and the, and the occupancy issue, but we also want to make sure that the, the public is protected and life safety concerns are, are met. So, getting into fire, I know that even the fire department would like to have some additional flexibility sometime. This can allow that flexibility, but then again, also allow for them to make decisions on a case-by-case basis. So, where we have some options to go a little bit further than those two areas would be in an area such as plumbing. Plumbing is something that comes up over and over, and it's, it seems rather, rather basic, but when you go into an older building and maybe it doesn't have the right number of public restrooms, and now all of a sudden, you're trying to accommodate additional public restrooms or unisex bathrooms, this methodology can allow some flexibility under, under that, under this rule here. Also, I wanted to insert some language regarding water fountains. In the city of Phoenix, that they found that there was provision for, for water fountains that came up every once in a while, and what they did is in their, in their program, insert language that allowed water coolers to be provided to meet that requirement. But another thing in downtown areas, as you get more buildings closer together, you know, what we could look at ultimately is if you have enough common or public bathroom facilities that hopefully at some point, those can meet the, meet the needs of the patrons in these little, little shops instead of every single business having a bathroom. You note, when you go into a shopping mall or something, especially you go into a food court, well, obviously, you know, the McDonald's and the Panda and everything else, they don't have their individual restrooms, but around the corner of the food court, they have a common restroom area. That's kind of the, kind of what we're thinking, that the, one option can be for common restroom areas that are close to these buildings and/or another option would be instead of maybe having to require two, two bathrooms, maybe have one unisex bathroom. So, plumbing is typically an, an expensive item to address in a remodel and a difficult one to address, so that flexibility would help. Also, would allow some flexibility for some type of special occupancies. And on accessi- accessibility, we would, we would look at the requirements that are there in, in that program. noting however, that, you know, we can have certain provisions in our code and reflective of the, of the building codes we adopt, but ultimately, we can't override the federal ADA requirement. So, where something is mandated under federal ADA, that we don't have a lot of flexibility there. But what we can do, similar to what I just discussed on the bathrooms, is that maybe we can look at the opportunity in the downtown where we have all these common parking areas, and now we have these new ADA ramps that Public Works has put in, and maybe we can get a, a few more handicap accessible spots located throughout these, these parking areas, and then make sure then we just have, you know, accessible paths from these shops, from the, from the parking spots to the, to the shops. So, it's not always trying to fit everything on your property, but sometimes, community parking lots or bathrooms may be, may be an answer. In certain areas on, on permits, we would look to, to not, not require permits for, for certain improvements that really are not changing, changing the structure or the occupancy or, or any life safety items. We do note however, that we want to, remember that, you know, this area is also where the historic district is, so we want to make sure that anything that's going through the process on a historic building continues to go through Historic District Advisory Commission so that we're not allowing modifications to properties, visible structural changes to historic properties without making sure we're going through the correct historic preservation process. Now, another major, major thing here is under the plan review and permit fees, what's proposed here is to adjust the ratio of the project valuation by 50, 50 percent. And so, right now, a project that comes in, their plan review and their permit fees is based on the value of the project. The more, the, the more expensive the project, the higher their plan review and permit fees are. What this would propose right off the bat is to lower that valuation, so there, there would be a fiscal impact to, to the town's budget, but at the same time, you know, you could look at it in that if you don't have the development in this area, you're not collecting anything. If you encourage it, you might collect less, but ultimately, that could end up being, being a, having a positive impact just by trying to stimulate the activity. We would go a little bit further on that and just say that a project valuation of less than 10, 10,000 would not be charged, would be not, would not be charged those fees. So, if somebody came in and, and maybe the only thing that they're doing, the only thing that they have to do is make a modification to their bathroom, and they can do that for $9,000 or something, then they'll, they'll go through a permitting process, but we wouldn't collect a fee on that. So, development impact fees, under the infill incentive district, the council actually has some discretion to deal with development impact fees. And what we would propose for clarity is just that we would not charge a development impact fee within this, within this area on any addition or remodel or any, any lot that ever had a, a building on it before. That's a clarification of, of policy. Now, Mayor and Council, you may, you may decide that maybe you don't want to charge impact fees, development impact fees, bless you, within this area under, under other circumstances. And I believe under the infill incentive program, you actually can do that. I know when we, when we modified the development impact fee statutes and we hired the consultant, you know, we all heard, well, you know, you have to have, your, your, your fees have to be evenly distributed and, and you can't decide not to collect fees in one area and collect them in another area and so on and so forth. However, the state allowed us to have this, this program, the infill incentive program, and Council, if you, if you wanted to modify what you charge for fees or impact fees, I believe that you would have the right to do so. And, and before we bring that final program to you, we could have the town attorney clarify the language, but you may find that maybe you want to continue to look at that item a little bit more and, and at least maybe even look at it for an interim basis. So, in this program, the other benefit of adopting it under the infill program is that you could, we could try it for a year and see if it's working or not working, or is certain parts of it are working or not working, come back and modify it. If, if it's still, if it's not doing a lot in, in one year and there's things that we can do to, to make it better, we could come back and make it better. If we're having no problem getting development activity picking up in the core, then maybe, you know, we would minimize some of the incentives that are, that are put forward. One scenario that we run into a lot of times in the downtown is that downtown was plotted a long time ago, and then over time, everybody kind of modified their, their lot lines, and sometimes you don't, you don't know for sure where lot lines are until you kind of do a little, a little investigating. And that can be a problem under the building and fire codes because they would, those codes recognize lot lines. So, you measure setbacks from those lot lines, you measure separations from those lot lines. That can have an impact. And what we would propose is just that for the purposes of development within this, this area, we would, we would consider the lots combined with simple verbiage that would be added on the, on the permit. So, for the, for the practical purpose of reviewing the permit and applying our codes to the project, we would consider the lots combined without requiring somebody to hire a surveyor and go out and do a, do a subdivision and legally combine the, combine the lots. And we have done, communities have done things similar to that, such as unity agreements and, and other language where you, you could do that, but this would, this would actually make that process a little bit easier. Getting into parking, actually tonight, again, we were looking at adopting the DC zoning district for additional properties downtown, and as you recall, that in the DC zoning district, there's not a requirement for onsite parking. So, if you have a more intense use, it would be great to have a loading, a loading zone. If there's not a convenient handicap spot somewhere on the site or on a common parking area, probably would be a good idea to have an ADA parking space. But beyond that, there's not an onsite parking requirement because we want to encourage development out to the, out to the lot lines. If you're outside of the DC zone or you want to provide some parking on your lot, what we would do is allow for a couple of things. One is for you to do a parking study to evaluate, you know, maybe you don't need the five spaces on your property because your neighbor has, you know, 20 spaces and only needs 10, and the use is operated different times of the day. You could look at it in an arrangement like that, an easement for parking, a shared parking agreement, cross-axis on parking, maybe there's ample common parking areas around like the RV parking lot. We could look at those types of, types of situations and maybe we could waive some of the parking that was required. If they still want to do parking or still mandated to do parking, we could also look at the service, the surface of that parking lot. So, right now, automatically, you would have to put in a, an asphalt or a concrete parking, parking area. If you're doing a small project and you have three or four parking spaces you want to add, it costs a lot to have somebody come out and pour, and pour some asphalt, and, and that's, and sometimes actually, you know, doing a big asphalt parking lot is not extremely attractive. Sometimes it might be more attractive to do a, I think this is one area where I do have a picture. So, you know, here's some scenarios where, you know, there's parking lots that are, that are from other, other materials, and, and that can work fine. And then actually, that has some benefits in the fact that if you don't increase the impervious surface on the property, then you may not be getting into having to engineer the, engineer the lot and get retentionary and so forth, if you can just do the percolation into the ground. So, there's different surfaces that are out there. You know, there's the compacted, decomposed granite. It has a hardening agent put on it, so it, it holds up a lot better than just putting landscape DG, but it's, it's compacted, and then if you put parking blocks or something in front of it, or find some other way to delineate the spaces, it works, it works really well, as you can see by the, by the examples that are, that are provided there. And again, this would be in your downtown core area where you, you already have some situations on residential and commercial properties where you have parking on surfaces other than concrete or asphalt. We would also propose to, to waive the requirements for, for paving and, and grading and dealing with retention on the property if the, if the net result is not increasing the drainage impact on the, on the property. And particularly with regard to ensure that you're not draining onto a neighbor's property. If you're going to add a building addition, or you're going to pave a parking lot, and we can see that those improvements now would cause water to flow onto your neighbor's property, that would be, that would be a concern. If you're not going to have a net impact because you're going to do some of these alternative things, then that would benefit you. Also know in the, in these areas that it's, it's hard to apply the entire, the landscape code to a property. Sometimes a property has very little frontage, sometimes it may not have any frontage. In that case, you know, putting some potted plants out in front of your property might be the solution. Just things that you can continue to do to beautif- to beautify the property. So, there would be modified requirements for that. Under this program, if it were to conflict with other, other codes that we would have, the more lenient requirements would, would apply, except for it's noted again, that we wouldn't want to have any conflicts with the requirements of the historic district as because we need those standards in place to preserve the status of the district and our relationship with, with SHPO and so forth. So, these are some of the things that we've touched on so far, and this is the first draft, although it is, it's a very comprehensive first draft, but I think that we can, we can, we can come back again in, in June and tackle this item a little bit further, and then the plan would be then with that direction to go to one of the advisory boards to get a recommendation on the program and bring it to the council for, for adoption and then implement the program. That would be the first part of the discussion today, and I. And this would not preclude us also, Mayor and Council, from looking at other opportunities to continue to streamline the development process townwide. So, some of you may have seen the article recently in the Arizona Republic about different building programs that are, that are out there. And there are some, there are some ideas, things that we could do for, for development, although clearly we, the development-related issues have been in the, have been in the core. They've been in the core because they face the challenges of dealing with an existing building. It's sometimes a whole lot easier to just find a site that's never been, had development on it before and, and start from scratch and build a new building. Sometimes, you know, that's a, a lot bigger project, but sometimes that's a lot easier than actually going in and doing a modification to a building that's set there for, for 10, 20, 30, 70 years or so. But we can look at some other improvements beyond that, and one of them is, that's kind of catching some popularity right now, is the self-certification program, so, which is not going to be as effective with the Town of Florence, but a self-certification means that you would be able to certify certain architects to do, to do work within the community, and their certification process would allow them in essence to bypass some of the additional layers of, of the plan review process because they're being certified to complete all, all of that. So, they're really putting their, their license further on the, on the line to do that. There's been a couple of communities, mostly Phoenix, some of the bigger communities out on the west side that have, that have looked at that. But again, that's a little bit harder to do when you, we don't, we don't have a ton of architects and engineers that work in this, in this area, so that would make it hard to do a self-certification program. But would you like me to jump into some ideas on the, on the sign code? Or would you like to discuss this before I move on?
Let's hold off on that. We had quite a bit. Bill, you had some question on zoning or permitting and everything.
Well, on the part about water running onto other properties, if it's been doing that all along, are we going to make them put in a retention pond? I mean, you know, if it's, if it hadn't caused any trouble with the adjacent properties, are we going to require them to change? I mean, you know, there's, there's, there's places I know around town where, you know, when it rains, it's not large amounts of water, but, but it's already flowing in from property to property to property. It doesn't all flow to the street, and that part's about the only thing I see that I have a question on unless we can go on a case-by-case basis on that, because it says in no case will properties be allowed to drain on neighboring properties.
And that's a, that's a, that's a good, good comment, Member Hawkins, Mayor.
And if there hadn't been any complaints up to this time, I'd, I'm just wondering how we would rectify that.
Well, in the case of this, we would be looking at the scenario where somebody's coming in to do improvements. So, as far as an existing situation, obviously, if, if we get complaints, you know, we'll have to go out and, and respond to that. If there's a way to rectify those situations, we'll, we'll work with the property owners to, to do that. The end result obviously is we would like to have the water draining out to the street and, and then from the street to retention basins and to the river and so forth. But as far as this process that we're talking about tonight, they would apply if somebody's actually doing improvements on the property. So, if you're doing improvements on the property that potentially would trigger that you have to do, that you're going to add a building, you're going to put some paved parking down, and now we're going to have to watch where your drainage, drainage goes. So, those existing situations wouldn't, wouldn't be applicable anymore. But if you have an existing situation, you're not coming in to expand your parking or your building, then that wouldn't be regulated under, under this situation.
Okay, so like a commercial building or a commercial property, if the, if they're not really changing the overall building itself, in other words, they're not expanding it, then what the present situation would be acceptable, is that's what?
We would certainly like to resolve any of those situations if, if at all possible, but if somebody comes in for a permit and they're, all they're doing is modifying the inside of their building, and they're not touching the lot, then we're not, they're, we're not- of their building, and they're not touching the lot, then we're not...that's not tied to the permit, then.
Okay, well, that's...okay.
I have an issue with that. I think that reoccupancy and change in occupancy of the buildings always been an opportunity to correct old code. Code's put in place for the safety of not only your building, but the building that's next to you, and all of these buildings on Main Street are connected. So, if you've got one that has bad wiring in it, and you don't correct it, when you have that opportunity, you could pretty much expect for the possibility of other buildings next to it catching on fire, if they do catch on fire. The other thing is, change in occupancy also relates to, you know, what's allowable for ingress and egress. If your doors are swinging in, and you change your occupants' load in there, you're required to switch the doors so that they go out. So, if you've got a large amount of people in the building, and they're trying to get out, they're not trying to pull the door open, they're trying to push the door open. We really need to be cautious about any structural changes in the buildings, any electrical, fire safety, the use of combustible dangerous materials in the building, exterior lighting for safety of the employees that work in the building. I agree that there's some opportunity there for the parking, and possibly some community restrooms that are shared by the buildings. You can have a...waive the male and female restrooms, but do something outside of the buildings within certain distances of each restroom. They become a community restroom. I'm trying to think of...kind of, some of our county complexes have multiple buildings on their campuses, and not every building on that campus has a public restroom in it, but there's one community restroom that people are able to go and use within a certain distance. And I think there's some opportunity there. But really need to be cautious on the safety issues when we're watering down our code.
Tom, you went through the biggest portion of this, more than any of us did, on the remodeling of your building downtown.
Yeah, I think one problem with the old part of town is looking at these buildings that are all built together, and like Tommy says, it can cause problems. We don't really hold a strict fire and building codes in there. But also, there are some buildings on the historic district that, at one time, had eathrops that carried away water. But now, they're not even there, the buildings are sagging, and they're affecting properties next to them. And I believe that can already be checked in our code today, can it not?
Yes.
Yeah, a good example of that is the old Borreese Building. The white apartments next to it, there's a vacant lot right behind it, and all that water comes into...if we get a real good flood, it comes into the school superintendent's office.
I do. After reading the agenda beforehand, I started doing a little bit of background. And have you heard of smart goals, or not smart goals, but smart codes?
Yes.
Okay, so, I was reading and wondering, how could we integrate some of those? Because a lot of that legwork has already been done, when you're looking at the importance of adapted reuse, looking at the old vacant buildings and sites being repurposed. I'm also...I'm just reading a few notes that I made here. They take into account the historical value and offer a little leeway to the standard building codes, so seeing how they could be adapted into our current policies, as well as I noticed that we didn't offer a work session planned in the future for store owners, for business people in our community, to say, okay, what's something that you would like to see? What would be helpful to you to bring the businesses in? I know we...it looks like we have a work session that will be with planning and zoning, as well as with the historical committee, but can we also get some feedback from the business owners and from the residents down there as well?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think on the second work session, it would be intended to invite everybody.
Okay, and have it be open that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then, as far as...yes, you're right, referencing smart codes, and that's exactly what we're doing in this program, is trying to find those opportunities where maybe we can give a little leeway. Still trying to preserve the integrity of building codes and life safety and basic zoning requirements, but to find a little bit of leeway that just might make or break a particular project. So, and we could amend this as well. Now, let me clarify that on, you know, the building code requirements. So, you have flexibility under the adaptive building code, but if you're going to start going in and trying to rewire a building, or change an ingress and egress, those plans still have to go through permitting. The architect, when you get into looking for those modifications under the existing building code, an architect is going to have to say, you know, that those work or don't work. So, it's not that it's completely ignored, but they try to find alternative means, other options. Now, there are situations, if you go in a building, and the electrical might be really old, but you don't touch the electrical, well, as the code is today, and as it would be under this program, you may not be touching electrical unless we obviously see, you know, a situation that's an obvious life safety hazard when we go in there. But we could modify this to make sure that we're not really giving too much leeway on things that might be a concern related to electrical, fires, ingress and egress and so forth, and focus on some of the other items, if that's the direction that we have.
Is there a requirement of a certain percentage that you're required to look over the electrical systems? You know, I'm thinking probably a lot of these buildings were put in before code, and the reason why we lose a lot of strip areas, historic strip areas like that, is because those codes are not caught when they have an opportunity to correct them.
When you go in and do a change of occupancy, you go into take over a building that's been vacant for a while, typically, folks will look to minimize the amount of impact that they do to those buildings, because you can obviously just start triggering kind of a landslide of improvements that you have to do to improve the building. So, when somebody looks at doing those modifications, unless they're going to do an overall, you know, a real overhaul, like with the Pinal County Courthouse, which we reviewed and did the plan review and permitted on, that was a massive overhaul. But once you go in that deep, you're changing out all those systems. So, the average person and the architect and their engineer are going to look at opportunities to minimize the impacts into those systems. So, if there's a structural wall, they may say, you know what, let's not touch that structural wall, because that's going to give us a lot of other issues. Maybe we can look for another opportunity to do what we want to do without touching that structural wall.
How do you catch people that are circumventing that by taking smaller portions and doing it bite-sized pieces so that they're under the radar?
Well, I think the...you know, that's a good question, Member Solai. I think, obviously, there's always going to be people that, you know, want to do certain things, and, you know, some projects that get done over the weekends and so forth. But as far as, you know, if we have knowledge that somebody's working on a project, whether it's, you know, the size of it, it's large or small, we'll contact them to see if it's going to require going through the process. But technically, could somebody come in and do a project and say, you know what, I'm going to bite it off in chunks, and maybe the impact is less? To some extent, ultimately, it would catch up with you. And then, you know, the electrical is one thing that's probably one of the most challenging things. I think if the fire guys were here tonight, I think that would probably be one of their biggest fears, too, is the electrical in the older buildings. You want to do your best to bring that up to code. You know, when it comes to the parking and the landscaping and the plumbing, and how many bathrooms that they have, you know, nobody's getting hurt over that. We do want to watch the ingress and the egress, and, you know, you change to an occupancy that where you had ten people in the building, and now, all of a sudden, you have fifty people in the building. Yes, you clearly want to make sure that they have a way out of that building in an emergency, and you want to deal with the electrical. So, I could see that those are areas that we can continue to refine and take additional comments, you know, between now and the next meeting, and then also at the next meeting. We'll polish this up a little bit more.
But our fire inspector today, he can still do random inspections, can't he?
Absolutely. We have a fire marshal, and the fire marshal of the Town of Florence has the right to go to buildings and do an inspection. Yes, sir.
Reuben, you have any?
I don't know.
All right. I just got something, a couple of things, Mark. What survey are we using here in Florence?
Oh, the land survey? Oh, well, that's a difficult question, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to comment on the survey that we're using, Wayne, as far as the reference?
Well, basically, it's a township, so it's basically a meets and bounds, a section breakdown that we establish in the old part of town, the town code. The town core is based upon that section breakdown. Now, there's six sections in town, and the old core that runs up to Florence Garden has a forty-foot offset due to some areas in the original GLO surveys that were done back in the mid-1800s, as I recall, and that's why we have some variations in the streets. But primarily, it's all meets and bounds. Did I answer your question?
Well, I'm just getting on to it, because down on Main Street, you know, we have a lot of buildings with common walls also. I don't think a member of the council would do anything about setting back the safety standards for our codes as far as health and safety of the people. But when we go on these boundary lines, you know, I can't get my property surveyed, nobody wants to touch it out where I live, because, again, that forty foot. They said, well, we'll give you some where we think the corners are, but that's it. You know, we don't know. You know, we were talking about drainage, and onto other people's property. Well, where I live out there, the water flows off the town streets, and when we have a good rain out there, all the property from up Bill's way, because Bill sets up on the crest of the hill there where it starts coming down, all that water comes through my place. I mean, it doesn't bother me, but, you know, when we start talking about water going off of other people's property, we should be taking care of our property, too, if we're going to do that. You know, if we're going to make the people do it, the town should be doing it also, is what I guess I have to say on that one. And I think one of the things that we've run across here recently, that we may need to be addressed, is the way we address the people that are coming in to get the permits. I think that's one of the biggest questions I hear, is why? And I think that if they can't do it, that they should be told how they can do it. I don't want us to go and be a big brother watching over you all the time. I'd rather be big brother here to help you to get this done in an economically feasible manner that adheres to our public safety, you know, fire and electrical and so forth as that. But the two biggest issues I've had here recently were over the way that the people were treated over in your department. And I think we should need to be looking at that, Mark, and having a checklist, or some sort of a...once they get there, say, okay, this doesn't really meet our code, but you can go here to get it done. And I know that you're requiring a lot of engineering studies. And I'm wondering, that runs the cost of a project up tremendously. If there's really no need for it, where common sense can prevail a little bit. And I'm going to use the example of Boochalata's shed behind my house, over there, behind his property. He built a shed out of steel and tin to protect his motor home, protect his own property, keep it out of the sun. Well, now, he's fighting over having to have an engineering study and stuff like this, and it may be resolved by now, I don't know, but, you know, I just don't understand, and I don't guess the reasoning behind an engineering study on something that has six legs and a tin roof. To me, that throws a lot of extra cost on, Tommy.
Yeah, you wouldn't have a problem till the wind picked it up and threw it on top of your house.
Well, if the wind picks it up, throws it on top of my house, my house ain't going to be there anyway. That'd be a tornado.
Well, you know, I'd hate to talk about individual scenarios, but, you know, in a couple of cases, you know, the problems have resulted because improvements have been done, and then...
Come in.
And then they came in, because somebody called them or so forth. So, it's always easier to kind of come in and say, you know what, I'm thinking about doing this, and I know our inspectors have always been good at giving suggestions. And the case of that canopy, the suggestion probably would have been, you know what, there's a lot of folks out there that pre-manufacture these, and they have design specifications for all kinds of canopies, whether it's eight-foot tall, twelve-foot tall, fifteen-foot tall. Pick one from that list, order that one, put it in. You give us the specs from the manufacturer, boom, you don't need engineering, because it's pre-manufactured by the company. So, you know, there's...it's just almost, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's just easier to come in and say, you know what. Sometimes, people don't always want to know what the requirements are, but, you know, if you want to do it the right way, it's easier sometimes just to come in and say, hey, you know what, I want to do this. How do I go about doing that?
Have we looked at changing the deal for awnings? You know, I know now, for about the last year, we've been requiring them to be up to a snow load, in which I thought was pretty absurd for Florence.
Yeah, I want to clarify that, Member Hawkins, that there's not actually a snow load out there. I don't...I'm not quite sure where that came from, but there is a...I think there's a reference to a snow load from the manufacturer, because they manufacture these awnings for states throughout the United States. So, I think the reference comes from that language. But as far as us, now, we're looking at a weight load, and primarily in this area, we do get some pretty strong gust of wind, and we're looking at a wind load on those awnings. But again, that's something that, you know, those awnings, there's a ton of pre-manufactured, pre-made drawings on those engineering drawings, so if you just follow those, and that's what we've done for the most of the time, like at Florence Guards, when we do those awnings over and over again, they give us the uniform documentation, and nine out of ten times, it works pretty well.
Well, about a year ago, they did require them to start using heavier metal, and they said it was because of bringing it up to a snow load, but I'm not making that up.
I remember that reference, yeah.
Let me ask you on this. On our permit fees, if a person is doing his own work, his repair work on his own structure, why does our permit fee include labor?
Mayor, Member...
If a person's doing it yourself?
Sure, sure. I know what you mean, Mayor, members of the council. Our codes, just like, again, you know, majority of the communities throughout the state of Arizona, they use the International Code Council that defines the basis for how you collect the fees and what the fees include. The fee is based on what it would cost a person to do the improvements that you're looking to do. So, whether you do them yourself, or whether you hire somebody. So, that way, there's a uniform fee that can be applied throughout Florence, throughout Pinal County, throughout all fifteen counties in the state of Arizona. So, normally, somebody can fill out the application, and they can put down the value of their project, and they're pretty straightforward about it. And we don't typically debate what that fee is unless it seems really unreasonable. They're doing a complete remodel on a twenty thousand square foot home, and it costs them, you know, five hundred dollars. If they put a fee there that looks reasonable, then we go with that fee. If there's an...if we don't think that fee is accurate, then we may ask them for additional information, or you can go to the ICC, and actually, you can pull out a table that says, for this type of occupancy, for this type of square footage, here is your multiplier, and it's standardized throughout every jurisdiction in the state of Arizona.
That may sound very good, but let's go into this a little deeper. For one thing, a person has to put on that permit the amount of materials everything's going to cover to do this job. But if they're doing the work themselves, there is no labor charge. I don't see how you can add that labor charge to that. As long as they're passing all the inspections, everything else, it should just be for what the materials are going to be, not for their labor. If they're hiring a contractor, fine, that's included, I understand that. But if it's just the person themselves doing it, I don't see where that should be involved in the price of that permit.
And Mayor and Council, and just to clarify, you know, that the... And Mayor and council, and just to clarify, you know, that the codes and the fees are adopted by you and you can set forth what regulations you want to have and don't want to have, or what fees you want to have, what fees you don't want to have, to some extent, unless, you know, statutes absolutely require it. So if you wanted to direct us to say, in the cases of an owner doing his own residential work or maybe an owner doing it all, I don't know if I would go beyond that, but maybe I'd say if an owner is doing his own work on residential, then the value of the labor would be excluded from the cost of calculating the valuation. You know, we could look at something like that.
What if the owner's building his own spec house? I mean, there's got to be some type of parameters on that. I can see a small modification, but what if you've got somebody that's coming in and building spec houses? Their house is a hundred thousand dollar house or something like that?
Are they a contractor, Tommy?
Not necessarily. If you're, you'd probably have to hire contractors for like the electrical and HVAC and plumbing, but you're still the builder of the house.
Yeah, but I would think if you have contractors hired whatsoever, their fee would have to be involved in that permit.
And exclude your fee as acting contractor. I don't agree with that.
Yeah, and, you know, on a smaller project, that's easier. On a bigger project, you know, the owner may come in and say, "Yes, I'm going to, it's owner builder, I'm going to do all this work." In reality, they probably are having multiple contractors come out and do in certain components. In the adaptive reuse program that we created here, though, one mechanism of dealing with that, instead of getting into that potential quagmire, is to just go with a fifty percent reduction and the value of a project ten thousand dollars or less, not charge a plan review fee or a permit fee. And then you would automatically address those scenarios within the confines of where we really need a boost with the development. Because, you know, out north of the river particularly, you know, everybody is doing everything by the book and there's no complaints about, you know, the process or permits or the fees or whatever, the regulations. That's just the way it is. But, you know, in the core, you're going to have some more of those issues.
Okay, I'm glad to see us bringing back the infill and being able to do something. Last time the town did that, when we waived the fees, where we were doing infill, it came back later that we were violating the law. And now, has the law changed where we can violate the law legally?
Well, I don't want to say that we would be violating the law under any circumstances. The loophole that we have is the infill incentive district. The statutes and our own adoption of that program say that we can make modifications to our fees and our development standards. So therefore, if we were to do this program, under the infill incentive district, we could make those kinds of modifications. Jim can clarify further, maybe at the next work session, but I believe that we have every opportunity to do that and I've shared this program with him and all the department heads. So I think that that is our way to potentially do that. Without doing it that way, you know, that was correct before, that we couldn't make the distinction and we had to get rid of that blanket policy to not charge infill, I mean, development impact fees here. The second item, just, you know, if I can, Mayor and council, I don't have a draft. You know, we could probably sit here for a long time looking at this development code here and walking through the code page by page, but what I wanted to do is, working in the sign code, is first of all, just get some ideas potentially of some of the things that we could touch on in the code. So I've hit on some bullet points there regarding, and again, I went out and researched other codes and, you know, you could look at the number of pages or you could look at, you know, how friendly one code is over another code. But I think the bottom line is, you know, even though our code is not that old, it's from two thousand and six, it's worked pretty well. We've produced a lot of good signs out of it. But in looking at other communities' codes and reaching out to International Code Council and the Arizona Association of, no, it's the International Sign Association and the Arizona chapter of the Sign Association. So going right to the source, the company, the association that works with all the people that, you know, that want to do signs. I've had them kind of walk through our code and help us address some issues and I think that there's some refinements we could continue to make to the code. We did touch on the A-frames and banners a while back. That ended up working out really well, I think. We could look at streamlining the code, obviously cutting down the number of pages. I think focus more on the signs that we want to get and the signs that are allowed and getting away from more of, you know, what's prohibited. That's the way I think code should work more like that, instead of, you know, telling everybody what they can't do, but, you know, focusing more on what you can do. Coming up with some language for this, you know, evolving trend on electronic signs, maybe look at neon signs in some appropriate areas and probably be more flexible on directional signs, the area, the sign area of signs, whether it's attached to a wall or a monument sign, the height of a monument sign. We have to make sure that our sign code is content neutral, so we can't ever regulate what somebody puts on that sign. That's protected under the First Amendment. And then also, there's been, you know, changes regarding political signs. In fact, I think there's some changes that are coming up on political signs that we might be able to incorporate as well. But those are some issues and, you know, obviously, you know, this is pretty intense, but, I mean, this shows you why we have a sign code. You know, we obviously want, we're very proud of our community. We want it to look great and it does look great. So, you know, you don't want to open the doors too widely and, you know, you look like one of these old highways, highway commercial strips somewhere, you know. We have some very nice signs. I highlighted a few here, whether they're monument signs or A-frames, even a limited application of an electronic sign on the Sonic, attached signs that have worked pretty well. But I think we could, you know, there's always opportunity to revisit these things and come back with some additional ideas. And we'll also invite everybody out to a work session on this as well, Member Walter, members of the council. And so we'll continue to put more information together and come back on the nineteenth. And then the sign code modifications are going to take a little bit more time after that to rework because then we do have to go into code and that's going to take a little bit more effort, but we can work on that as well.
I am glad to hear that we're going to be involving the business and the community members in soliciting their feedback. And one other question I wanted to ask is, have we, as a town, ever considered looking into building permits being offered online? Because looking at being business-friendly, looking at working with the community, there's some other towns and communities that, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, they can go online and apply for permits, schedule inspections, receive inspection results, you know, pay for their application, permit and inspection fees. Is that something that eventually our town will move towards to be more business-friendly and community-friendly?
It's actually something that we already have in place and Pulte uses it every once in a while. In fact, for a lot of their inspections, they'll utilize it. A lot of the smaller folks, they just, they found it easier just to come into the counter.
But anybody can apply at any time, is there...
Yeah, absolutely. We have a permitting program called SmartGov and there's a portal where you can go on there and you could apply for a permit or you can set up for an inspection or you can check the status of a permit or check the status of an inspection, so...
Can we maybe highlight that a little bit? Because I tried to find it on our website, but I couldn't find it.
Okay. Sure, I can do that. And, you know, Pulte's utilized it. I don't think it's, like I said, most of the folks, they like the contact still, they like kind of coming in and having somebody help them draw up their plan or put it together. And then on some of the bigger projects, they couldn't, we had a previous version of the portal before under an old permitting system and we worked with the Anthem Hospital actually doing that. And that helped to some extent, except for when you got to the stages where you had plan sets that were hundreds of pages thick and, you know, then you have to work on and how you download those programs to the town and then everybody has to have computer monitors large enough to be able to review those huge plan sets. So it's, it works in a lot of cases, it's not a perfect system by any means.
Okay, thank you.
But a good point.
Any other question, Mark? You know, the one thing I will agree, that the parking requirements downtown, we really need to take a look at that because there's no parking space down there on Main Street. We do have the public parking that never really materialized where we have a lot of usage of it over behind the true value. But when we're looking at that, I know that we're getting ready to put in the park down by the Silver King, the street, you know, how are the streets going to run where we have plenty of parking for people to be down there? I know we've got off-street parking on the courts and granite over in that area, but, you know, if we're taking a look at, again, I go back, if we're going to make the public do it, then the town needs to do it first. And I think, you know, that we really need to take a look at that because I think that really affects what's going on downtown to a certain degree.
And on the park development, we have looked at, we've been analyzing opportunities where we could get maybe increased accessibility from parking into that location. And we have some land in the vicinity or the possibility of maybe getting an easement for some interim parking lots here and there, but we are evaluating and then also looking at the configuration of the on-street parking around the park area. So it's kind of a twofold issue. On one hand, you want to maximize all the lots in downtown and build out as much as possible and not require people to have a ton of parking on the property. On the other hand, when you become really successful in filling out, in filling those lots and getting the infill and getting the businesses in there, then you're going to start to have a parking issue. And my only hope is that at some point, we could actually justify a parking structure in downtown Florence and then I think we'll know we'll be in good shape.
I'd rather do that than have Gary Pranzo come in unless he can't get in his house. Okay, Mark, thank you very much. Before we go into breaking the meeting, we're going to take a five-minute break. Call a meeting back to order. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Everybody remain standing after the invocation.
Tara?
Will you bow your heads as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Tonight I pray for the agenda set before us. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work around our beloved city of Florence. In your most blessed name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every nation and every nation in this world. Thank you. This is a call to the public for public comment on an issue within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised or may ask that a matter be put on future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during open call of the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion legal action. We have sign-up seats in the back. The first one I have is Denise Colbert.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Denise Colbert, Florence Gardens. I'm standing here this evening to voice my dissatisfaction with you putting Lee Olson on the Planning and Zoning Committee. I have two reasons for this. First of all, he's not here all the town time. He's a winter visitor, so how is he going to come twice a month to the meetings? Second of all, I don't believe he's a registered voter and according to our town website, applicants must be a qualified elector. So how can he even be on it if he's not? Has anyone checked this out? Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, would you take a look at that and let us know?
Sure.
Nancy Sancada?
I didn't realize it was going to be now. I thought it was going to be...
Do you want to wait during that?
I didn't know if we would be allowed to speak at that time.
Sure.
Okay, then I'll wait. Thank you.
Logan Smith, do you wish the same thing or you want to speak now?
I'd like to speak later, thank you.
Okay. Any other member of the audience have anything they'd like to say? Seeing no movement, I'll call the public. Lisa?
Public hearing and presentation. Item A, public hearing on an application received from Linda Parvivian's Florence Gardens Mobile Home Association, 3830 Florence Boulevard, Florence, Arizona, for a new Class A bingo license and for council's recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license to the Arizona Department of Revenue. The town clerk's office did receive the application for the liquor license, has reviewed the state statutes and is bringing forward the said license for a public hearing tonight with a recommendation for approval.
Any members of the council have any questions on this? Need a motion?
We need to have a public hearing, sir.
Oh, wait a minute, this is a public hearing, excuse me. This time I'll open the public hearing. Any member of the audience have anything they'd like to say on the application for the bingo license? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing. Lisa, do we need a vote on this?
Yes.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Florence Gardens Mobile Home Association's application for a Class A bingo license.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the application for Florence Gardens Mobile Homeowners Association application for a Class A bingo license. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce recognizing the Business of the Month. Ms. Hughes will be presenting.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The Florence Hospital of Anthem opens its door, hits door, on March eighth, two thousand and twelve. It's conveniently located at forty-five forty-five North Highway in Florence and is easily accessible from all areas of the valley. Florence Hospital of Anthem is licensed as a general acute care hospital and open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. While offering a complete array of traditional hospital services, Florence Hospital of Anthem is pioneering in its approach to emergency medicine and the rapid, acute and compassionate care of the entire staff provides. Also, their door-to-doc in thirty-one minutes guarantees that you be seen by a board-certified emergency physician within thirty-one minutes of arrival. We treat your emergency as if it's our emergency. Florence Hospital of Anthem will be successful due to the hard work, dedication and loyalty of our physicians, nurses, associates and volunteers who give themselves so significantly to make us who we are here today. And we're proud to be a healthcare provider in this community we serve. Now and into the future, State CEO Arthur Delorisso. On behalf of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, it is my honor to present the May two thousand and fourteen Business of the Month to Florence Hospital at Anthem. Accepting the award is Zenji Reynolds.
Thank you very much for this award. It's a great honor and we're very proud to be a part of this community and we're very proud to serve this community and look forward to serve this community for many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item A, discussion approval or disapproval to authorize the Merrill Ranch Facilities District Number One Board Manager to secure a general obligation... District Number One Board Manager to secure general obligation bonds or GO bonds for the purpose of financing public improvements within Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 plus the cost of issuances.
Mike?
Good evening, Board members. Tonight, we're, this is a step that I don't believe has been done in the past. In the past, what you've been brought as forward is the actual resolution, a feasibility report, and then the authorization to proceed with issuing debt and complete all the documents related to such debt. In this case, we thought we'd let you know that this is what we're going to be working on, the feasibility report, et cetera, to issue GO bonds to the amount of, not to exceed 1.5 million, to construct public improvements or do public improvements within or for CFD Number One, issuing GO bonds for CFD Number One. The district is currently authorized up to 1.3 billion. We're nowhere near that amount. Currently, we've issued about $4.6 million in GO bonds so far, and out of that, just under $4 million of principal still exists for those GO bonds. The 2014 issue, if it goes forward, will be in addition to that amount. Following tonight's meeting, we'll be working with our underwriter and bond counsel to develop the feasibility report and the other documents that are necessary for such GO bond issuance. And then at that time, we'll bring forward all of the resolution along with everything else at a future board meeting. It's expected that these bonds will be funded by the 3.25% levy that already exists, so there will not be an increase to the levy percentage. And with that, the public improvements that this GO bond will fund are pavement, pavement, I'm drawing...
Spiritway.
Work on the pavement within the CFD. I don't know why I can't think of the word, but it's about a million or up to $1,000,000.5 for the district. And they're all regional improvements, so that's why it's issued under a GO bond. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Well, I appreciate the time that you took in talking with me earlier. I'm just going to jump in and say that. We had a lot of questions of making sure that it wouldn't increase the amount of taxes that are paid by the residents in addition, what it would cover regarding the pavement, the road improvements, the sidewalks being, you know, Spiritway, I believe it was Anthemway, Merrill Ranch Parkway, in and around those areas that would be mutually beneficial to the community.
Any other discussion?
What, you know, those yellow areas, I'm wondering, you know, they say they're excluded. What are those areas and why are they excluded?
I believe they're commercial areas that were excluded upon the formation of the district. That was just, they were just excluded at that time.
Okay. They belong to Pulte? Is that right?
I would have to ask Lisa or Wayne if they know the answer to that question.
They're owned by others, so you've got a couple of ownerships. The Safeway is Evergreen Development Company, and then you have some other investors that represent the other three commercial corners there.
And they cover their own infrastructure costs then, apparently?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, I'll just, okay.
Any other comments? Question? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Merrill Ranch Facilities District Number One Board Manager to secure the general obligation bonds, otherwise known as the GO bonds, for purposes of financing public improvements within the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One in an amount not to exceed $1.5 million plus the cost of issuance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Board Number One.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10, consent agenda. Item 10A, adoption of a resolution number 1437-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, supporting the American Legion's application to the Gila River Indian Community for $60,378. Item B, adoption of resolution number 1438-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, supporting Project Bridge's application to the Gila River Indian Community for $100,000. Item C, adoption of resolution number 1439-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, supporting Project Bridge's application to the Gila River Indian Community for $225,000. Item D, adoption of resolution number 1440-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, supporting the Town of Florence's application to the Gila River Indian Community for $40,000. Item E, adoption of resolution number 1441-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, supporting the Town of Florence's application to the Gila River Community for Item F, adoption of resolution number 1442-14, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, supporting the Town of Florence's application to the Gila River Indian Community for $59,000. Item G, acceptance of the funds from Maricopa Association of Governments in the amount of $177,496 to purchase a PM10 street sweeper. Item H, approval of the April 7th, April 14th, April 21st, and April 23rd, 2014 minutes. Item I, receive and file filing board and commission minutes. One, February 26th Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes. Two, March 19th, 2014 Joint Library Advisory Board Commission Minutes. Item Three, February 12th and February 20th Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes. Mayor members of council, that is your consent agenda item.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda?
Question of Lisa first. Is there anyone here from Project Bridge?
Anita Wagner. You want to have those taken off?
Yes.
I'd like to, B and C pulled.
Do you need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as written with the exception of B and C.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions items B and C. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number B, which is resolution number 1438-14, and I will invite the representative
of Project Bridge to step to the podium.
I can handle B and C at the same time here. My only question is, I understand you're not working out of the school anymore, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So where will you be operating out of?
Right now, out of my house.
Okay, I just couldn't quite figure out how you'd be able to operate all this if you got it, working out of your home, that's all.
Well, we're hoping to apply for these two grants and a few others so that we can get back on our feet on our own.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I wanted to know.
You're welcome.
What kind of square footage are you looking at?
Oh, the square footage? Around 3600 square feet.
3600.
That's kind of what we had at this school, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Project Bridge has run across the situation where they're having to leave the school due to legal qualification. I do have a building I'm working on, we're still working on it, trying to get a meeting with Amy Fuller, but I think we're out of that business having to worry about the school at this point since, Project Bridge is such a wonderful program, I hate to see it lose. If they don't come up with this money, I'm hoping that maybe there's some project or some special fund money in our budget that we may be taking a look at because it helps a lot of families here in the community. And it seems like that we should be helping people rather than, you know, we ought to be helping more people. And I think that this would be a perfect place if they don't get these grants come through, that we take a look at using some of the discretionary funds that the council has to help them out and get this program back on the road. And with that...
With all that said, I'd like to make a motion to accept item B and C.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B and C. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 11, unfinished business. Item 11A, ordinance number 60613, discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Codes of Ordinances, title 15 Land Usage Chapter 150 Development Code, Section 150.047, District Use Regulations Table A, and establishing a new rule residential equestrian subdivision, RRES zoning district section. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, Mayor Council, this is the item that we spoke about at the last council meeting and had a public hearing, and we had a good amount of public comment on it. I don't at this time have anything to offer other than to be here to address questions that may arise.
Any member of the council have any question for Mark? This time I'm going to recognize Nancy Senkata.
My name is Nancy Senkata, and I live at 23625 North Bridle Way, Florence, Arizona, in Wild Horse Estates. You've heard me before at the podium, on the phone, in letters and emails, and I trust you all know how I feel. Rather than to bring it up again, I just want to say thank you in advance for doing the right thing by voting in favor of zoning that is comparable to our current Wild Horse Estates zoning with the same animal restrictions of no more than two horses, no other animals, and no fowl. This is very important to me because I want to protect our property values, and I want Wild Horse Estates annexed into the Town of Florence. I want the benefits of fire protection, police protection, trash pickup, and recycling. And I want to live in a town that will help our community. I appreciate the town government where I and my neighbors have the opportunity to be heard, and I thank you again.
Thank you, Nancy. Logan? Am I saying your name right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I know that we've been before you several times, and we're here because of limits. My wife and I are very disappointed. We have a two-horse limit. We have neighbors, a few horses are, a few houses down, excuse me, with nine horses. A lot of flies, other people with up to 30 or 40 chickens and guinea hens running around, other people that for seven years have been throwing their horse manure into the wash that goes right in. My backyard is half of that wash. So we're asking for limits, just like speed limits and everything else. We're asking for the two-horse limit and that so that we can all be good neighbors. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Mark, could you address the council on what we discussed out prior to the meeting?
Mayor, members of the council, a question came up in regards to what the county is doing or contemplating doing, and that is, the county has met with some of the property owners and talked about trying to fix the zoning situation that's out here. They would do so, or they would have to pursue doing so by rezoning every one of the lots out here to another zoning district. The thought is that they would do that to address two things. One is the perception that maybe there should be more animal privileges out in the area or the issue of it being zoned for manufactured homes when the majority of the homes are site-built homes. So the county has talked about doing that, but they would have to, unlike us where we're looking at a situation of applying comparable zoning, it doesn't require a public hearing to adopt comparable zoning on the property. It doesn't require the consent of every property owner to apply comparable zoning. In the county situation, to apply the new zoning, if they were to do that, they would have to work with every single landowner out there to get them to consent to do that. So while they have discussed doing that, I don't see that potentially as something that they are going to accomplish anytime soon. However, you know, should it happen that they were to somehow expedite a rezoning through this area before the annexation, we then would still apply whatever is the comparable zoning. So that's our role in this process. We've complied comparables, we apply comparable zoning. The district that you have in front of you tonight, that is the comparable zoning to what they're currently zoned. If the county goes through a process and changes them to general rural, we'll apply the comparable zoning to general rural. So on August 4th, August 11th, right around there, when hopefully we can close out everything related to the annexations, we're going to apply whatever is the comparable zoning at this time. I would tend to believe it's going to be this particular zoning district here tonight.
So if they come in with a zoning before we do the annexation, and we have to change this to their new zoning, but their new zoning has to be done with all the property owners in agreement, is that correct, from what I'm understanding?
Yeah, they would, Mayor and Council, they would actually, for them to do it, they would be doing a zone change. And in the advent of Proposition 207, which dealt with property rights, the likelihood of them changing zoning on probably even one or more properties out there, it would be really unlikely that they would pursue a zone change without getting the consent of property owners. And based on there being some disagreements on what the zoning should be out in that area, I think that that would present increased challenges for them, so.
And again, I wanted to bring that out due to the fact that we've had so much along this, and we want to do it right, and that's what I want to make sure we're doing it right. Any other member of the public have anything they'd like to say? Hearing none, I need a motion?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 606-13 for the rural resident equestrian subdivision zoning district.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance 60613. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question? Let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, Lisa.
Okay. Councilmember Montano?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Selaya?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Arkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Aye.
Mayor Minkin?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous.
We have a majority vote, and the ordinance goes into effect after we get you annexed. And if you haven't signed an annexation petition, it is up here. Okay, thank you.
Item B, ordinance number 61014, discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the downtown commercial DC zone change located in an area generally bound by Ruggles Street to North Butte Avenue to the south, Bailey Street to the west, Pinal Street to the east, and including property located at the southeast corner of Pinal Street and 8th Street. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, Mayor Council, same thing on this item. We had extensive discussion about it at the last meeting. We are proposing to change the zoning of the properties highlighted in the red here to the downtown commercial zoning district, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
We haven't anybody pull off since we began the process, is that correct?
We've had no additional updates since the last meeting.
Any other question? Hearing none, any motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 610-14 for the downtown commercial DC zone change.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 610-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 12, new business. Item 12A, discussion approval, disapproval of appointing Billy Joe Garcia to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2014, and appointing Gary Pranzo to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2015, and appointing Lee Olson to the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate. Mayor and members of council, I would like to point out to you both our town code under membership, section number 32.02. It asks when we're looking at membership to look at each board, commission, and committee and make sure that they shall be as nearly possible have integrated a balance of membership which represents each race, sex, and geographical area of our municipality. It also states that the council shall in making appointments take into consideration a person's knowledge, background, interests, experience, availability to perform the work, duties of the board, commission, and committee. A member of a board, commission, and committee may concurrently serve on many boards of the Town of Florence. the Town of Florence. It also does say that the member shall be a bona fide resident of the municipality and a registered voter if 18 years of age. On our application, and right before the signature, the application states that the applicant further understands that to be considered for an appointment of a board or commission, that I must be at least 18 years of age, except for a youth representative, a qualified elector, and a resident of Town of Florence unless a resolution, motion, or ordinance created by the board specifically exists. They further understand that their attendance at regular meetings, regular scheduled meetings is critical, even if they are an alternate member of the town, and the town council may appoint a replacement for members who are chronically absent from regular meetings. I will remind you that our code states that the council has the right to remove anyone who misses three consecutive board or commission meetings. With that, the Town of Florence did have a committee made up of planning zoning commission members. They did, they did interview, and they did make the recommendation. Staff is putting forward the recommendation of that committee to the council.
Do we know if the one applicant is a registered voter of Town of Florence?
We do not verify. We accept their affidavits as a statement of qualification that they are qualified electors.
I think on his application, check no, if I remember correctly.
There's not a check mark, it's just a signature.
It states, are you a registered voter?
It's for if you're a registered voter, there's no, because I questioned that myself. Let me look it up.
You'd like the application to be changed to include that, you're saying?
I think it's on there, Lisa.
It is on there. It's on page. Page 236.
It's on there, because I question whether he should be on there if he's not a registered voter. It's on there somewhere. I know I saw it.
Let me look. Oh, yes, he says no, so he would not be qualified.
Yes, okay.
With the exception of?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointees with the exception of Lee Olson to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Are we making that contingent upon him meeting the qualifications required?
I'm sure he can absolutely reapply if he meets the requirements.
Okay. Then we have a motion to appoint Gary Pronzo and Billy Joe Garcia to our planning zoning commissions. Mr. Pronzo's term expires 12/31/15. Ms. Garcia's term report, extends to 12/31/14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Welcome aboard. We appreciate your service to the community.
Item B, Resolution Number 1443-14, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with MP Florence LLC and Oregon Limited Liability Company in authorizing execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement. Annexation Number 2013-10 Crestfield Manor, MP Florence Property. Mr. Eckhoff?
Mayor, members of the council, this is our ongoing process here of bringing pre-annexation and development agreements to you. We still have quite a few more to go, so we're going to, you're going to have a, a lot of these presented to you still in, in June and July. But we're kind of wrapping up the process almost on Crestfield Manor. As you know, we, we previously did a development agreement for, for another lot owner within this project, and we're happy to present this pre-annexation and development agreement to you tonight as just one more step forward in completing the entire process of these, of these annexations. So the terms of the agreement are, are similar, if not exact, to, to what you've seen before. The intent is to encourage the, the folks to come into town and give them an opportunity, a slight incentive to commence development within a short period of time by making sure that their, their impact fees do not increase during that initial, initial period for them. So I, I will note, I don't know if you've got a correction yet, but I just want the record to reflect that in the resolution, there's a transcription error, so the second whereas, it says DQ Crestfield, and let the record note that that would be MP Florence LLC. So apologize for that, for that error, but other than that, everything is accurate and ready to go. Be happy to address any questions.
Lisa, how does that work when we're adopting this resolution with DQ Crestfield being listed as the owner?
The resolution was corrected prior to this meeting, and my staff should have presented it to you. It's also should be update loaded on the website. So as long as we make the corrections before the signatures, we're fine.
And this is all vacant land at this point?
Yes, this is, these are, the majority of Crestfield Manor is, consists of vacant lots with the owners that we're dealing with. We're dealing with three, three main lot owners that represent the majority of Crestfield Manor. Another lot owner has about 10 vacant lots, and then the homes that you see out there, maybe all but two of them are, are owned by the individual residents of, of those homes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1443-14, entering into a pre-annexation and development agreement, PATA, with MP Florence LLC.
Second. We have a motion, the second, to adopt Resolution 1443-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This will be the manager report, I don't guess we have a manager report, he's up in Vegas trying to promote Florence. Call of the public, the second call of the public. Anybody in the public that'd like to have anything to say, please come forward at this time. See any movement? I oppose call of the public. Call of the council, Tommy?
Nothing.
Tara?
You know, I just wanted to share an experience that I had this past week in Florence. I came home the other day, and I saw one of my neighbors was having a garden put in. There is a foundation in our town, Future Florence Foundation, and I just want to, you know, recognize what they're doing around the town in terms of painting and donating their time and putting in some gardens. If you guys have an opportunity to look them up, they're doing a lot of good things in our town as well. And I believe we have a member in our audience, so thank you.
Truman?
I don't have anything.
Bill?
Nothing.
Valerie? Tom?
Yeah, I'd like to thank several people here tonight. The Pinal Partnership had a meeting at the Holiday Inn, it was put on by Sandy Smith with Pinal Partnership, and it was on historic buildings. First of all, I'd like to thank Ernie Felice for a great presentation on the Second Courthouse. I'd like to thank Gilbert for putting up a great talk, doing a great job for us. I'd like to thank our tech department for all the work they did setting up and getting it done. I'd like to thank Mount Athens for a great breakfast. I'd like to thank the Holiday Inn and Harold Chris for being the emcee. I thank you all.
I did forget something, Tom, I'm sorry. A little hindsight here, but it's pretty important. Tomorrow's the vote on the water purchase. I just want to remind everybody.
And Bill, I was going to bring it up, thank you. We do have that up on the, tomorrow, the polls open at 6 o'clock in the morning, close at 7 tomorrow evening, which I think is going to direct the council in which way the citizenship wants us to go on the purchase of Johnson Utilities. It's very important that everybody gets out and votes, that you're making the decision for the whole community in the direction towards the council, which we have to take. Main Street's looking a lot better. We're preparing for a lot of this, this fall with a lot of reunions going on in town. We've got a whole bunch of different people coming in, different classes that'll be coming in this year. I hope to have everybody have a good time. The one thing I did see on Facebook is, and Wayne, well, whoever takes care of us not here, I saw that we have a public restroom down there, but it had no public paper. We need to get somebody to make sure we got public paper. If we're going to have a public restroom, I would think that we want to make sure that that's taken care of. We can talk about having all the bathrooms in the world, but they're not much good if you don't have any paper. With that, need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion, the second, adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.